That's why it's giving a little. There's scarcity of them, too.
Okay, it is. It's nine thirty-four. We'll call the October meeting to order. Uh, I do have a couple of announcements to make. Uh, number one is the coffee cups. They are not biodegradable. They are to be used, not taken home. Someone's gonna wash them and they'll be clean here next time that we use them. So we're being environmentally responsible by not having all that styrofoam, I guess. So, thank you. Um, the other one is, uh, we need to maintain a little order when we're speaking. The people online cannot figure out who's talking. So, um, I will try to keep an eye on who has their hand raised. I will call on you, try to call on you by name. If I don't mention your name and just point to you, just say, you know, my name's Herb and I like that, so that people online can, you know, figure out who's talking. So.
So you're ready to go?
We're ready to go. Um, we'll have an invocation by Pastor George Scheck from Redemption Chapel in Barocca.
Here we go. Good morning. Good to be with you today. I don't know why I'm sitting back in the corner. The donuts and the goodies are up here. Um, while I got the microphone, I need y'all's help. My address at the church is thirty-six oh seven Duncan Lane. Do you realize we don't exist? Um, our road has never been seal-coded. The US Post Office says our road does not exist. I drive up it every day. It's there. So if you know how to pull some strings with the township, because we haven't had any luck with them, let us know, okay? Um, so I just created disorder and I don't really care. Um, just some verses to read, okay? And I'd like to share these with you. And then a short prayer. There's a verse of scripture that says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, lean not on your own understanding, and all your ways submit to him. He'll make your paths straight." Then there's a verse that's very interesting. It says this, "Blessed are those who find wisdom, those who gain understanding." And for those of us that are married, we understand this next one, because wisdom is referred to as a she, because we know our wives are smarter than us all the time. "For she is more profitable than silver and yields better returns than gold. She's more precious than rubies. Nothing you can desire can compare with her. Long life is in her right hand, her left hand, or riches and honor. Her ways are pleasant ways, and her paths are peace. She is a tree of life to those that take hold of her. Those who hold fast will be blessed." Talking about wisdom. By the way, I walked in here today and, and with you, I, I miss my friend Ollie. And I know he's meant a lot to this board over the years and he was, he's on our church council and we miss him too. Uh, but, um, I hope you guys will carry on with his heart, whether you agree with him or not. You know, his heart was committed to our county and to all of you. Um, so we miss him and I know that you do too. Let us pray, please. Father, we know that the wisdom that you want to give us has often been lost in our culture today. Wisdom that will guide us, that wisdom that will give us, uh, understanding, that will help us make good choices and good decisions. From the beginning, Lord, you have led us in ways that will increase our worth and the worth of one another, wanting us to serve one another as if we were serving you. Your wisdom applied not only increases the experience of your love, but it also guides us through the challenges of life. Father, today bless these men and women who are your servants. May they be open to your spirit, giving them wisdom and direction. May the overall agendas that are counter to what is best for us all. May their decisions and opinions not be led by the political chaos going on in our nation today. Help all of us today to not merely follow our selfish agendas, but to look on what is best for the people we serve. Father, thank you for each person in this room today. We may disagree on the issues, but that's a good thing. Forces us to see things from angles we never would have considered on our own. Whatever our beliefs about you are today, Lord, may we be open to your wisdom on the issues that be determined. Honor their willingness to serve you in us as residents of Vernon County. Jesus, the ultimate service, servant, gave his life for all of us. And Father, as we in leadership do what we do, we are to serve in his name. For it's in his name we pray. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you for your time. God bless. Have a good day. And I won't steal a cup.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance? Roll call for attendance? Or no? Properly posted? Yes, this meeting was properly posted. And I'll have the roll call. District one, Bite Lake?
Here.
District two, Struda?
Here.
District three, Gady?
Here.
District four, Walliser?
Here.
District five, Kilmer?
Present.
District six, Padretti?
Here.
District seven, Slack?
Here.
District eight, Egan? District nine, Olson? District ten, Easterday?
Here.
District eleven, Jacobson?
Here.
District twelve, Henry?
Here.
District thirteen, Taylor? District fourteen, Lawler?
Here.
District fifteen, Schweiger? District sixteen, Wilson? District seventeen, Muller?
Present.
District eighteen, Sullivan?
Here.
District nineteen, Stanek? Uh, Sandy's in Florida, I believe. So you have eighteen present, one absent. You have a quorum. Motion to excuse Sandy. Charlie, John? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, same sign? Sandy's excused. Approve the minutes of September nineteenth meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? David? Motion by David to approve. Second by Lawler. All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Are there any announcements? Seeing none? Hmm?
These are presentations.
Oh, okay, yes. Okay. We'll have the presentation of the twenty twenty-three audit and then a presentation by Bethany St. Joe LaCrosse.
Uh, good morning. Thank you for having me today. I'm Greg Patel. I'm the audit partner on the engagement. Um, I'll cover the audit results in summary first, and then we'll cover some financial observations. And along the way, if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask. Next slide, please. Yeah, as far as the audit results, the draft of these financials, which we're working to finalize here in the next few days, contains an unmodified, clean audit opinion on the financial statements, which is what you're striving for. From an internal control standpoint, um, we're required to kind of work through your most significant accounting processes, um, as one phase of the audit. And that does result in four findings, um, two of which really report that we prepare the financial statements and then the schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. Um, so those are a little bit. Keep going. Okay. Um, those are very common findings across our client base. Probably ninety percent of our clients have us prepare the financial statements as well as that schedule of awards. Uh, the next couple of findings, then, um, you know, uh, material account adjustments, not quite to the next slide. Material account adjustments, you know, I think we can kind of work with your finance team and your management team to reduce the amount of material adjustments, um, over the next couple of years. Usually we pick off three to five adjustments and try and have your team work through them, um, the following year. And then segregation of duties. Um, you've had some turnover within the finance department, but as you, you know, complete the finance team, we can talk about where the most ideal segregation of duties exists going forward. So, as far as federal single audit findings, uh, we're working to finalize that testing, but there will be a reporting finding regarding your ARPA funding, um, on that side. Any questions from the audit results standpoint? Okay, moving on to the financial observations here. Uh, this slide is your general funds performance against both the original and final adopted budgets. So the first column on the left is your original budget. The second column is the final, and the third column is the actual performance of the general fund. If we can scroll down just a little bit there. Uh, the third line up, net change in fund balance, your final adopted budget, uh, anticipated a decrease in general fund balance of approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the overall change in fund balance then, from an actual performance, was just under two point four or five million dollars, an increase. So a positive performance against the budget of two point eight million dollars. And a lot of that was really the recognition of the ARPA funding, um, from an unearned standpoint down into your revenue to cover some of the operations. Overall, general fund balance then of sixteen and a half million dollars. And on the next slide, we break that out from a component standpoint. I always think it's helpful to kind of look back from a historical perspective over the past five years of where the general fund balance has been overall. And then the components of the general fund balance are of particular interest because the unassigned fund balance essentially represents resources available to start the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. And, um, so on the next slide, once we get to that, you'll see that unassigned general fund balance as a percent of your general fund expenditures. Um, one thing to note here is you see no yellow on the twenty twenty-three column. The yellow is assigned fund balance, which essentially represents available resources, but they've been earmarked, um, for particular activities. And so we need to revise the draft that we have right now to recognize some of those activities, which, uh, the most significant one is really land conservation activities. And so there will be some assigned fund balance on your final issued, uh, financial statements. Going to the next slide, go, go ahead.
Uh, just a question on that previous slide. Um, will that yellow chunk come out of the light blue or the dark blue?
It'll come out of the dark blue. Right now, when we go to the next slide, you're gonna see a percent increase in that unassigned fund balance, and that really is because, uh, the assigned fund balance is incorporated into that draft as is right now. So on the next slide here, we, as I talked about, we have your unassigned fund balance as a percent of your general fund expenditures. And the reason that we kind of key on that performance is because those are available resources to begin the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. As far as benchmarking, anything from a twenty to thirty percent, um, is considered good. Anything above thirty percent is considered excellent from a bond rating standpoint, as well as a cash flow standpoint. So you can see that the, that percentage increased seventy-eight percent. I think it's gonna fall back down into that sixty-five to sixty-eight percent once we, uh, pull those assigned fund balance funds out of there on that draft. So, you know, in summary, as of twelve thirty-one twenty-three, which is a snapshot of your fund balance, I think you have a very strong general fund balance as of that point in time. Always important to understand from the, you know, understand that point in time, that snapshot, as well as management's forecasting of any future financial, um, projections. On the next slide, I have, uh, generically the income statement for your enterprise funds as well as the highway fund here. Uh, we did cover Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres' performance, uh, at a separate audit presentation, but we can see there from an operating loss standpoint, uh, fairly significant loss in Vernon Manor for the year. And really, the staffing and, um, you know, whether that's internal or needing to externally hire staffing, that's really been a challenge across all nursing homes in Wisconsin for a number of years now. And that really affects the operating results of any of the nursing homes, especially in the counties. Um, the third column over there, solid waste and recycling, you'll see a loss of approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. And you have to accrue, um, uh, closure and post-closure liability within the solid waste. And as you near capacity on that, you essentially amortize that into your operating statement for solid waste. And so that's really what was driving the loss in solid waste for this year. And that far right column then is your highway fund, and that also shows a loss. Um, but if we look down at your non-operating revenues, the tax levy falls in there. And then you have an overall loss of one point six million dollars. Something to consider going forward, I would say, is, um, some counties or a lot of counties have a county road and bridge special revenue govern, uh, governmental fund, and the levy goes in there. And then as the highway works on your local roads, from both a maintenance and a construction standpoint, it charges that fund, and it makes it a little bit more transparent in order to kind of understand from a local sense, you know, what the local charges are when you separate that, um, out of the internal service fund. So just something to consider and, um, we'll have ongoing discussions.
Just a quick note to that. That is something the CPA that we've been working with on the chart of accounts project, um, had recommended that we do as well. Um, and it sounds like that could help us with our general transportation aid as well in the future.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, more transparent in terms of identifying what your local costs are. Right now, they're kind of buried in here. And then you take out debt, which is a liability on the highway fund as it's presented now. But then you have road construction expenses in this fund. And the, the roads are actually recorded in the full accrual government-wide statements. And so you have, it's a little, you look at it and you say, well, the highway lost money this year, but it really didn't because, you know, that debt proceeds. And we're gonna see this when we go to the cash flow statement on the next slide. Go ahead. Well, um, as the nature of the, the type of fund that highway is, you're required to amortize your capital assets over their useful life. And so on a full accrual basis, depreciation is a component of your operating and maintenance expense. It does. Um, it, it certainly is a component of, of the high, highway operations. So I do think, you know, we kind of talked about from the local perspective, if you separate the county road and bridge maintenance and construction cost versus the levy that you're allocating as well as your state aids, we caught, we talked about that benefit. But the benefit to the highway proprietary fund here that we're looking at, go ahead.
I believe Lonnie's talking about Vernon Manor, not the highway. I think.
Okay. And you're talking about depreciation across all the enterprise funds? Yeah, that's, that's just how generally accepted accounting principles are, so.
I, I just get, you know, somebody comes to me and they say, you'd lost this much money. Well, depreciation. They don't understand depreciation any better than I understand depreciation. So just, just a comment.
Well, that is why I always present the income statement, but then on the next slide, we have the cash flow statement. And so I kind of look at the income statement as the long-term, how are you doing from an operational standpoint? Because it does have your non-cash depreciation expense in. The alternative, if that wasn't, uh, generally accepted accounting principle, is that your cash outflows for any equipment in the highway fund would be a one-year hit. And so you would see fluctuations there as well, and that would be very kind of hard to manage, so, in my opinion. We can go to the next slide then. And if we can just kind of zoom in a little bit on the top there. Uh, this is your cash flow statement. So this is kind of the near term. How are you funding all of your cash inflows and outflows? Um, hope, you know, certainly the first and most significant activity is your operating activities. And so you really want to generate positive cash from your operating activities, because as we'll see, um, in the third section, you've got capital items to finance as a result, you know, as a result of ongoing operational needs. And so we can see a net cash outflow from Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. That kind of follows the income statement's performance for the year. Um, solid waste, you can kind of see, as I denoted, the amortization of that post-closure liability, when you pull that non-cash activity out, solid waste actually generated a positive ninety-one thousand dollars for the year. And then if we can kind of scroll over to the right a little bit, we'll take a look at the highway here. And again, we can see the effect of that co-mingled activity and the operating activities there. But then on that next non-capital financing section there, your levy comes in. And when we get down to the bottom, um, we'll see the overall change in the highway fund. If we can scroll back across and then we'll tackle the last half of that page. Uh, so overall change in cash and investments, it's about the fourth line up from the bottom then. And we can see overall change in cash from Vernon Manor and Acres, is essentially break even. And then the solid waste, an increase of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or, pardon, uh, increase in, or a decrease in overall cash and solid waste of a hundred thousand dollars. And then same in highway, that farthest right number there, a decrease overall of a hundred and eighteen thousand. So you can kind of see from a cash flow perspective in highway, it was almost kind of a break even year, but the income statement doesn't really reflect that because you have the, the construction of the roads in there. And with that, I would take any further questions that you have for me.
Sure. If we borrow and capitalize four million dollars. If we capitalize four million dollars in highway repair, how does that reflect on the financial safety?
Well, are you talking about road repair or highway equipment?
Uh, some of each.
So, um, if you were to pull the, the roads out into a governmental fund, then that will reduce the loss in the highway internal service fund. And you'll see, again, your state aids and your levy come in to pay for that cost. And you'd be able to kind of manage that, um, from a understanding what the total costs for the year were and any resources available to start the next year. And then those will get capitalized on your full government-wide statements, um, as they do now. As far as highway equipment, any of that purchase, then that doesn't hit the income statement per se, because it gets capitalized and then depreciated over its useful life.
Allison?
Yeah, I, um, the first slide, you said reported finding, reporting findings for ARPA funds? And I didn't, I don't know what that meant.
Um, well, the ARPA funds were a result of the pandemic and you received two significant deposits, and you required to obligate actually by the end of December and then expend them by the end of twenty twenty-six. So you've had some sitting in an unearned account on your balance sheet for the last couple of years. Um, but you budgeted for the use of those funds, you know, um, each year. But the reporting on those, uh, wasn't quite right, because you use some budgetary basis as well as some actual basis numbers when you reported those expenditures.
So when in the ARPA fund where we're accruing interest, because we've set that money aside and accrued interest on that, is that interest also supposed to be reported as allocated? Isn't the requirement only to report the money that we were given?
Correct. Um, there are no restrictions on that interest earned, which they probably didn't have to anticipate back when they gave those funds away, because the interest rates weren't quite as high then.
Nobody was safe.
Right, right.
I was just wondering if we could get this presentation emailed to us?
Sure, yeah. Cassie has a PDF of those slides and.
Do you want me to wait until those, um, restricted funds are?
Yeah, we.
Are done and then we can update it so it's more to?
Yeah, I think so. I can update after we move those assigned funds out and then you'll have, uh, it'll match what the issued financials are, so. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we all have a full understanding.
Can I just say thank you? That helps.
You can.
Understanding. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
A presentation by Bethany St. Joe?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning. My name is Kim Gokenauer, and I am the CEO at Bethany St. Joseph. So, okay, so I could click it towards him. Okay. Thank. Thank. Feel like I'm, there we go, okay. As I said, my name is Kim Gokenauer, I am the CEO. I started with Bethany St. Joe and end of March, when Craig Ubolode, the former CEO retired. He had been with the organization for 12 years. Little bit about my background, I will date myself. I've been an administrator since 1993. I'm an Eau Claire grad, went through the Eau Claire program for nursing home administration. I'm a leading age Wisconsin board member, have been on the board since 2020. I am a past president of the Wisconsin Association of County Homes. I have been, have run county nursing homes. I actually was at Sauk County Healthcare Center from 2008 to 2015 and was in, was there when we built the new facility back in 2009 and actually moved the renovation and moved the residents in 2009. Left there in 2015 for the opportunity to move to North Central Healthcare Center as the executive over the Marathon County facility. And during my time there and during the pandemic, also brought on a management agreement with Merrill, Merrill, which was part of that tri-county agreement and brought on the Pinecrest facility at that time as well. So had the 300-bed building, which eventually was down to about 183 beds for North Central and then also had the 183 bed for Pinecrest, so had two buildings. And at that time, we were also looking at Portage County. But pandemic happened, life happened. I ended up then moving to Oakwood in Madison for the executive director role in, on the east side of Madison before I started at Bethany St. Joseph. So a little bit about me, but we'll move on, so. Click this way. So we're going to cover a few things, just a little bit about the history of Bethany St. Joe's, our management agreement. Management agreement, what the value of rural markets are, the achievement of our agreement, why partner with us and just the alignment of our goals and the nonprofit approach. So just a little bit about our mission. Bethany St. Joe's, our mission is to provide care and services. I don't need to read this to you guys, you can read to yourself. But basically, we are about dignity and respect in a cost-effective manner and placing value on the recipient and our families. Our vision is to inspire life, hope and healing in every individual while we serve, while growing as a beacon of quality care in the inside and outside of our communities. This is kind of a little bit about our structure. We report to a board of directors, then it's myself. We have a chief financial officer, we have, which has also reporting through that structure, takes care of all the business pieces of our business. And also we have our 3RT, which is an outside technology company that takes care of our technology. We then have a foundation director who takes care of all of our foundations. So we have like community foundations that work with us. We then have our chief human resources officer who handles and also takes care of our marketing and communications specialist. We are in the process of trying to find a VP of Clinical. We have a VP of Health Services, which handles all of our skilled nursing facilities. Currently, we have four different facilities. We have Bethany St. Joe's, we have Onalaska Care Center, which are our own facilities. And then we have the two management with Marinouka Manor and Northland Nursing Home. And then we also reports underneath that is our contract therapy services, which is MJ Care Services, which is the rehab piece. And then we have our other line of service, which is our Vice President of Community Services, which is our independent living and assisted living services and also our adult daycare centers. So our board structure is made up of 12 board members. No less than four seats are reserved for folks of the Roman Catholic faith and no less are made up, reserved for persons of the Protestant faith. And then we have four that are open of for businessmen or businesswomen and also other makeup of the, of the board. So we are a not, we are a faith-based organization and a 501(c)(3), so we are a non-for-profit. So we'll go a little bit into that a little later. This is current membership of our board of directors. They are on for three-year terms. They can serve three consecutive terms, so they could serve up to nine years. We had four members that were up for term expiration, as we can say. All four of them are going to renew their term limits. So this board will remain active for the next limit of their terms. So Kay Barra, you may recognize she is a Varoqua citizen. She is on our board. So that is kind of the current makeup of our board. Whoops, went too far. Now I can't get it to go. Whoop, that one. Okay, so the history of Bethany St. Joe's. We were formed in, did I go too far? I feel like I went too far. Okay. I didn't. So. Now I did, okay. So history of Bethany St. Joe's. We were formed by two outstanding leaders in the community in 1975. Bishop Frederick King and Carl Iverson came together because the building that we're currently where Bethany St. Joe's is located was built by an outside California company that was a for-profit company that built it and was called Parkview. They built the building and decided, they didn't know anything about Wisconsin, so they didn't want to stay in the business. And so they were going to get rid of the building, close it, whatever. It was a 300-bed building at the time. And they decided in the city of La Crosse that we still needed the business. So these two gentlemen came together and formed Bethany St. Joe's, a non-for-profit organization of, which is a very unique relationship. Normal, non-for-profit religious-based organizations are usually one, one faith. Usually Catholic-related, Lutheran-related, whatever. So this is a unique situation with us two different churches coming together to form our company. Became a legal entity in between the years of 1976 and 77. And in 1978, we also formed our first adult daycare centers, were operated. Through that, in 1985, we started entering into the management agreements. So we were approached with our first CEO, Tom Rand, was approached by the city of Marinouka and the city, or the city of Galesville and the city of Wesby to look at, they had their two facilities and they wanted some help with running their nursing homes. So in 1985, he reached out and he was like, yeah, I'm willing to help you with that. So since 1985, we have had management agreements with these two facilities and have worked with them on managing their facilities. So those are longstanding history with those two current facilities. In, between 1988 and 2010, Tom Rand, who was the CEO from 1976 to 2012, 2011, 12, he was very visionary in the long-term care and senior care business. He was one of the first to really start the independent living and senior care market. And he built about 10 to 11 different independent living and assisted living facilities throughout the West Cooley region. He also worked with Wesby and, and with Galesville and added on the independent living that they do both have, Friendship House and Eden House, which are at both of those locations. They did not have those initially at those two nursing homes. And in 1999, Franciscan Skemp Hospital approached Bethany St. Joe's and we purchased, which is now called Onalaska Care Center, which is now an 80-bed nursing home in Onalaska. From 1977 to 2020, we have been profitable with no issues. 2021 to 2023, we showed, we showed losses, which was really related to the pandemic. We really struggled with pandemic losses due to staffing and just the craziness of COVID. 2023, the first half of the year, we had a loss. In the second half of the year, we started to break even. And due to the historic Medicaid rate increases, which I will say that Craig, the former CEO, was very, very instrumental. He was very great lobbyist for our industry, helped to support and got some of the great Medicaid increases that we are seeing. In my 30-some years in the business, I've never seen the rates we're aware at currently. So kudos to Craig and some of our, some of my colleagues, and I was there too, that helped to get those great rates that we're seeing currently. 2024, we are on track as of right now for second quarter financials. We are at, at 448,000 profit. We are in track to be at about a million dollars profit this year for the organization. 2025, we're still working on our budget predictions, but if we hold true with our Medicaid numbers and our private paid numbers, we should continue to see that with our, with our increase in our population and our predictions. We should be on track for another good year. Some of the financial pieces of Bethany St. Joe's. I'm fortunate in the industry compared to a lot of senior communities of my size, of our size. Bethany St. Joe's, we have no debt. We absolutely have no debt. We have not had any borrowing at all. We have a healthy balance, cash balance. We have a strategic plan currently that the board is working on to look at where do we go from here? What do we invest? What do we do differently? What do we do for our organization as a whole? One of the things we're working on that's, needs to be done for the organization is, is we're investing in our, our technology, looking at new financial software, looking at new ways to implement, some ways to be more efficient as the industry is changing. How do we become more light nimble in the industry overall? Looking at a new electronic, its EMR stands for Electronic Medical Record, probably implementing that in 2026. Looking at our business partners out there to make sure that we are staying efficient and up to date as we move forward for the changes in our business models. So we started an overview with our, we talked about our management agreements. So like I said, we started those in January of 1985. Those management agreements really haven't changed much in the years that we've had them. So when we started talking with Cassie back in December, or Craig did, and then we started talking a little more seriously after I came on board a little bit more, I pulled out those agreements. These agreements are really old. So we started talking a little further, sent that first draft over and I was like, yeah. Corp counsel looked at it here and we're like, yeah, there's missing parts. There's things that are not even up to date anymore. So we went to attorney that works specifically in the senior industry, that does this for other companies, other corporations. And we worked with, you know, somebody who's an expert at this and started drafting. And then went back to the drawing board, worked with some folks. From that, I'm actually have been talking to my two other partners and said, hey, we need to really update these contracts as well and we're going back to the drawing board and updating their contracts. And they're very much on board with that. They're like, yeah, we haven't done this, we need to do this. So we're doing the same thing with them. So Marinouka is a 50-bed skilled nursing facility. Northland is a 59-bed facility. We maintain, they maintain their ownership. We, we've handled the complexities of their daily operations and we have continued to serve as their expertise. They are happy with the services we've done. We are going to streamline some more of the stuff that we do for them currently with the changes in the operation agreement coming forward. Currently, they're writing all the checks. We're going to take over doing that going forward in the near future. So we're changing a few things, ways that we do it from what it was done initially. So more to come with that. You're welcome to call and talk to them at any time. I know Danny, if you know Mayor Danny, he was willing to come chat with you guys or would come talk to you. He's, he was actually, he's like, I'll come talk anytime, so he's very chatty. They recognize the vital role, we recognize the vital role. I'm a big proponent about the rural nursing homes. We, as an industry, have seen so many rural nursing facilities close. I will tell you, I've already had Arcadia reaching out to us. City Council from Arcadia has reached out to us because there is nothing in Arcadia. They don't even have assisted living in Arcadia. And they, there's nothing for their, their, their folks to go to. And it's like, that is a shame. I mean, where do their folks go when they need services? So it's important for us to understand that there is a need. And I don't want to see families and loved ones have to travel long distances to get services needed for care. We, you know, we provide jobs in the local market. This is what's important when we look at this. We ensure that there's long-term care for your family members. And that's what we want to continue to do in the rural markets. There is a need there and we want to continue to serve that niche and that market. So these agreements continue to keep that in your local market. We keep that financial stability. Our biggest challenge was during their COVID, it really has been. We maintain our high-quality survey history. I'm not going to tell you and tell you that you'll never have a bad survey at Vernon Manor. I can't guarantee that because any building, no matter how good of quality you have, you can walk in any building and they can find a problem. That's just life. We're dealing with people, we're not dealing with a product, you're not dealing with a machine. You're dealing with people and people can make mistakes. And I have in my, in my lifetime have had bad surveys. Because people make mistakes, it happens. It's not intentional, it's not, it's going to happen. So I'm not going to promise you the world and say, nope, you're never going to have a bad survey under Bethany St. Joe's. That's not reality. What I can tell you is if something does happen, we are going to, we are going to correct it and we're going to put a process in place to make it sure that it doesn't happen again for that situation. Because the survey situations and the survey environment that we operate under is a little bit crazy. I will be honest, they are, they see something, they cite it. That's just the like, that's just the likelihood of where it is right now. So we're going to do our best to fix anything that happens. Am I going to tell you that we're going to come in and fix every financial woe in the building immediately? No, we're going to come in and we're going to look at your, your processes and we're going to put in new processes and we're going to work with the team and we're going to elevate what we can do and make that happen as fast as we can. It's not going to happen overnight. I know you have Michael, he's here today. Michael's doing a great job, I hear wonderful things about him, I hear wonderful things from the staff. They're already reaching out, they're talking to us. They are very happy with where Michael is doing with things. So we want to continue that pattern, you want to keep those things moving forward. We have very low staff turnover. I have staff that have been there almost since the day Mr. Rand started. They're still working there. I have a nurse at BSJ who's been there 40-some years. She's my head, she's my day nurse, charge nurse. That is the type of folks that work at BSJ. We want to continue to support the community. We have, if you are in Northland, that community is very built into Northland Nursing Home. They have an auxiliary that supports them, that is very involved with that community. They put money back into that building all the time. If you, if you were at Galesville last week, they had the chicken queue. They served over 350 meals for this chicken queue. The huge support of their community. That's what's important with the partnership, is that we keep that community feeling, the identity of the building.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I just want to brag, your activities director up, Angie in Wesby, awesome.
She is awesome.
She did whatever she had to. We worked with her to make sure some residents were able to attend an antique steam show and we did a little escorting, but just absolutely awesome to work with.
Creative.
Very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I would, I agree 100%. Creative, very creative folks. I mean, they come up with some very creative ideas. I, my new marketing and communications person, if you go to our Facebook page, the stuff they have on there is amazing. That's, that's what we try to do. We try to meet the folks where their needs are. It's, it's really, they're a good group of people. I'm very fortunate that I walked into the position that I'm meant to. I, I didn't create it, they created it. So why partner with us? You know, we have a lot of successful years of management with government entities. We've, I mean, the two buildings are municipalities, so they also work with the supplemental payment programs. They work with those programs. We bring, you know, we, we do, we've been doing this for a long time. We reinvest in the buildings with our capital, we make sure we look at making sure they're up to, up to code. We stay involved in our, or industry experts with leading age. When I step off the board in a couple of years here, I already have my VP of Health Services, Megan Firetag, who's also a Richland or Varoqua resident. She is on the board, so she will remain on the board. So we have, we're always doing that. We also are very invested in the Eau Claire program for healthcare administrators. We always try to get interns so that we can continue to grow our staff. We have career tracks for our. We have career tracks for our employees. One of the things I'm really proud of that Craig started, and I think is a great program, is we really have done this, and this has been probably one of the most successful things we've done for nursing recruitment, which everybody hears about nurses being a very hard place to find staff, is Craig started a program for a nurse career lattice, career bonus, is if you're going to school and you work for us and you are going to school to be a nurse RN, if you start with us and you go to school and you stay with us after you get your RN degree and you work sixty hours or more, we will pay you in two years twenty-thousand-dollar bonus. And we do it in the way that it's a bonus per month or per paycheck. So it starts out like a five-hundred-dollar bonus per week or per paycheck for the first year, and then it's so much for the second year. But the thing is, you have, the rub is, you have to work sixty hours a week, or sixty hours a pay period, to get that five-hundred-dollar add-on bonus on your check. So for twenty-thousand dollars, since I have been there, I think I have signed seven of those. That means I've hired seven full-time nurses in six months that have graduated and stayed with us. That is a huge recruitment tool. I don't know anywhere else where I've hired seven nurses that have stayed. So those are big, that's a big recruitment tool. We get better purchasing power because we're part of leading age, and we are part of a larger pool with having four or five nursing homes, also having the fourteen independent living houses. We have a better discounting. We get more volume discounting. So working through our purchasing powers, our marketing assistance with our corporation, looking at how do we market ourselves better with the hospitals, being part of ACOs, being part of these different things to get better processing. We have just volume discounting. It's just in general. So already looking at some contracts, changing some contracts, already looking at changing our food vendor, making that change for January, looking at EMRs, looking at some of those things, looking at our contracts for our insurances for even healthcare and our group insurances and things like that. So already making some, altering some of those changes as we're, as we're moving forward, and that's just some things I'm doing with our contracts, with what we have currently, adding another vendor, adding another, things like that. Educational opportunities. We also have other educational opportunities for our staff, not just for nurses. We want to promote within. One of the other areas that's hard to recruit for is administrators. We don't have enough administrators. COVID hit that area hard as well. Lot of folks my age decided they wanted to retire and not stay in the business. This was tough. This was a tough, pandemic was tough for a lot of us. So a lot of people decided they were done. So with that, we are trying to grow our own. And for a while there, there was not a bridge program. You could, the only qualified program was the Eau Claire program, which was a four-year degree and a year basically of an internship in a nursing home. Well, there's really good qualified folks that work in nursing homes or other fields that have a four-year degree, but there's no other way to get the nursing home administrator's license unless you would go to like, pay like a lot of money to do it through the University of Maine or go through the Minnesota course, and then it's, it's a lot more money. Now we were able to get, leading age led the, led the lead on this. We got the Madison College has now offered some courses to do the bridge course, and then you can sit for the NAB, which is our licensure. So we have four people going through it that we're sponsoring at our company so that we can grow our own administrators because we need them. There's not a lot out there because folks like me will eventually retire, and we need to replace people like me. So we're looking, how do we do that? We're also looking for, you know, prioritizing, when we talk about the non-for-profit approach, we're looking at, our focus is on our staff, our residents, our family. We don't, it's not about, it's not about the profit. The profit goes back into the buildings. It goes back into the people. It goes back into the buildings. We are known to be one of the higher-paying buildings. We pay our staff very, very well. When I compared our salaries, when we go to meet with your staff and make the offers, most of the staff are going to see an increase in their pay for their offers. There may be a couple positions that will be what we call would be left stable with where they're at. No one's going to see a pay decrease. Everyone will see, most likely see a pay and pay bump for their offers. And then there may be a couple people that would just remain flat until our, our wage bands would meet that and go forward. So we are very, very competitive in the market. So what are you responsible for? You're still responsible for the operational expenses, any debt payments, your financial audit has to go through you guys because that's just part of it because you own the license, you own your building. It's still your, your responsibility. These would continue annually and be part of the county audit. Your capital expenditures, I can't just go spend money. You have to approve those, and they are set a threshold amount that are in the contract, and any county advisory committees would be put in place and are established between the county and us. So that's really it, but if you have questions, I'm here to try to answer those. And as we go through this, those questions are going to come up, and we know that. So this isn't an all and done. We have, we'll be establishing, Cassie and I, Tricia, we've been talking a lot the last few months because there's, as we do this, there's going to be things that'll change. There's going to be things that will evolve as we go through this. If this agreement goes through and the date we've, we've chosen is not like immediately everything cuts off and it just starts. That makes sense? The employees will transition over. Some of the services will have to be done as we go because it's just going to, it's going to take time to transition things. If that makes sense? Because you can't just like, okay, we're going to move IT all over tomorrow. Some things are just going to take a little time.
With COVID having been such a hit in the industry as a whole, what kind of policy changes or budget, you know, buffering have you guys implemented for if something like that, you know, happens?
We had to put a lot of, we put stuff in reserves. That's where I think we built up a lot of our cash in the past is so Bethany St. Joe's made a really interesting decision when I wasn't there, but when they did, the board made a decision to go into a negative cash balance or made a negative budget decision that year, those two years, to actually have a negative bottom line and to pay the staff. So they did that purposely, but then going forward, we have done a very aggressive, like, put the money back into investments over the last few years. We have had to, and this has been more directed from the state, state and federal government guidelines, is our infection prevention policies have really been the focus the last few years is really to focus on that. That's now starting to lapse a little bit more, and now I think we're all getting back to a sense of normalcy. So now we're really focusing in how do you put your other policies and procedures back in place and get back to like your, how do I say this, home-like environment and getting back to like some of the things that we used to do that we can't, we didn't, we kind of like lapse. So it's more just looking at how do you protect your, your investments and how do you protect to make sure that if something like this happens again, that you have your protocols in place to go forward? So having your emergency preparedness plans and having your, just all those type of things ready going forward. So like having your memorandum of understanding. So like, I'll use example, we jumped into place with, I don't know, many of you probably heard about the La Crescent fire that, of the assisted living of the building that unfortunately they've lost their building recently. You know, I got the text immediately. We started going into effect. We actually sent staff over to see, do you need assistance? Do you need us to take some of your staff or your residents? They chose to go to a couple of places closer, but you know, we all responded because we knew that if it was us, we'd want the same type of courtesy, you know, and we didn't worry about, you know, how are we going to get reimbursed? How are we going to do all this? It was more about how do you help that other facility? You worry about those other things later. You don't worry about the regulatory piece of it. Now the buildings who are dealing with it are kind of in a regulatory quandary because now the regulatory surveyors are like, well, you know, you need to get those people out of there. Well, how do you do that? So it's kind of those weird dynamics that you have to deal with. But you do what you have to do in that situation. And so now we're putting those protocols and those emergency preparedness plans and those, you know, looking at your investment policies and looking at how you pull that together so that you are ready and prepared for those things and having those backup plans and having those, you know, just trying to be more financially and fiscally responsible and looking at how you spend your money.
Mary, you have your hand raised online?
Thank you. I know an area that people have had questions about, and if you could discuss it more, is the people that are in the Wisconsin retirement system. How does that change over to this new agreement? I understand it because I've been to other meetings, but I think other people need to understand what that's going to look like because that is a common question.
So I can't really speak to the retirement system because we don't, we have our own 403B because we are a non-for-profit. We're not a 401K. But I know that Cassie and Tricia, tomorrow, if, whatever happens here today, whether it goes through or doesn't go through, we have meetings scheduled with the staff tomorrow to talk about next steps either way with the staff. We have meetings, and I know that Tricia and Cassie are going to be talking to the staff about, from that perspective, on that piece of the benefit. We'll be talking to the staff about our benefits and what happens from that end. Cassie, you want to maybe talk more about the WRS and the pension stuff?
So a lot of it will be between the employee and WRS as far as how that's handled. There's different rules as far as if they're vested or not, if they choose to cash it out, if they choose to leave it there, if they choose to roll it over into BSJ's plan. And so we, we have met with a representative from WRS, and they've also offered, if this does get approved, to come to the facility and answer those questions for staff as well.
The other point I would like to bring, your recruitment from within is amazing. It's like a game changer and what a great program to provide to your employees to increase their capacity, but also to increase your capacity as a business. Thank you.
Wade? I think maybe some folks that, you know, haven't been attending the Board of Trustees meetings or perhaps folks in the public are, you know, before we get to the specifics of the agreement, are wondering, why are we asking this question in the first place? Why are we in this conversation? And I wonder, Cassie, if you might sort of set up the, you know, here are the issues that we've encountered, and then if you wouldn't mind responding to kind of the value proposition, how are you going to address those issues?
So last fall, our administrator left at the facility. We were having a lot of struggles with retention, recruitment, and also budgetary concerns. We had decided to look at a feasibility study, and that feasibility study would look at three things. One would be selling the facility. The second would be a management agreement, and the third would be changes, proposed changes to the facility and what those might look like. While we were in those discussions, we were actually interviewing vendors at the time. I was approached by Craig at BSJ, and that was, I believe in December of last year, about what a, what a management agreement might look like for the facility. And with the permission of the committee, we, you know, decided we were going to look at that to really flesh that out. It seemed like a great middle ground option. And we've, we've just been in those talks ever since. There's been significant budgetary concerns. To date, Vernon Manor, Vernon Acres owes the general fund three-point-four million dollars. So there, there was a lot of talk with the board members about how do we sustain this? Because it was really looking like it, it wasn't something that was going to be sustainable. We had a really hard time recruiting for the administrator position. Many of you know Chris Brigham. Chris Brigham had offered to step in, served a six-month term. Then we had another interim who stayed for a few months and left, and now we have another interim. So there are a lot of outdated procedures and policies there as well. So just a lot, a lot of organizational issues within the facility. So we wanted to really explore and flesh out this option to, to see what it would look like, and we were very happy to be approached by BSJ because of their reputation in the community. It sounded like a, a great way for us to be able to continue to provide the service with someone who has a, a reputation in doing so. And then in the meantime, reaching out to Danny at Wesby to talk about how it worked with the city and had nothing but good things to say. But that's, that's kind of the background as to why we were looking into this to begin with. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So what we bring to the table is we have long, like what, like Cassie said, longstanding history of having good surveys, having a team that has systems in place, protocols in place, policies in place, a team that can come in. So for example, if there is a survey issue, I can send in a team of administrators, DONs, nurses that can come in and audit, help put, educate, help put the processes and protocols to help them move forward. We can look at your staffing, how, how current staffing is done and propose a new staffing ratio or staffing model to, to, you know, consist, do standardizing, like look at your, how you do your processes and standardize, set up a policy. If the policies are outdated, look at our policies and put one policy that overarches, like consistent policies. Look at, we have like, like Megan's role as a VP of Health Services. She is an administrator who serves, all the administrators report to her, so she's operational. So she's over all of those buildings that they all report to her, so she's their kind of go-to person so that they work with her. So she goes and she visits the building. She checks for like operational issues. She looks at their standards. She's the one who is their go-to person to look at and make sure things are being taken care of. I can tell you that the plan is, when this would happen or if this happens, is that there's going to be a lot of time spent between my HR, myself, Megan boots on the ground, a clinical person, really just spending time in that building, whether it's if Michael agrees to be on for a while, or if we have a new administrator, or even having Michael and another administrator there for a while. There's going to be consistent folks in that building, working with the team, getting them the assistance and the, and the time to get it where it needs to be and, you know, transitioning stuff and, you know, looking at systems. And then the other part is, is we have centralized billing. So some of those, like some of the stuff that they do standalone moves into a centralized area. Some of the purchasing moves into, into some of those areas as well. Payroll all goes centralized. So there's a lot of things that become streamlined.
So I'm hearing Cassie say that one of the main difficulties is financial, that, you know, it's been a longstanding issue.
Yeah.
And I understand you can't, you know, potentially get into real specific things. But just to put a finer point on it, could you describe where you anticipate those savings come from? Because presumably, we're not going to enter into this agreement to continue to lose money. And I think that's going to be the, the underlying question a lot of folks have. How are we going to stop doing that?
Some of it may be in looking at how you look at your labor. Hate to say that, labor, because it may be looking at how you allocate your labor, how, what, what, what number of people you take to do things. It may be looking at your contracts, and there may be some very outdated contracts, and you may be over-ordering in some supplies. I don't know that. It may be in your collections. It may not be. It may be in looking at how you are coding for your collections of, so there's a, this is getting in the weeds, but you actually do a thing called an MDS. It's a minimum data set is how you, like somebody comes in and you like, basically, that's how you get paid by the state. So you have somebody who literally, they need two people to assist them. They need, they're incontinent. They, they can't, they need help, you know, whatever. That's how you code, and that's how you get paid for their care. So if you're not coding and capturing everything they need, you may be missing stuff and leaving it on the table. So it may be things you're missing. I, I don't know that. So, and I think you, I think you're, I think you're doing pretty well because you have somebody coming in and looking at that. But those are things you could look at to see if it's not being captured. It may be you're having too much It may be you're having too much supplies. It may be you're making too much production in your food. So there's lots of things. It could be the contracts you have might be, you're paying too much for your laundry soap. I mean, there's all kinds of things that are going to be really quick savings. It could be your pharmacy contract. You might be paying way too much for the meds that you're getting. So it's, it's a matter of like really dialing in on those different contracts and looking at it. So like I know that's one of the, I think that's one of the big quick fixes. We have a contract with a pharmacy that's very, very reasonable. So I think that's going to be a very quick fix. So some of those things are going to be really quick. The other thing is, is our benefit package. I'm going to say this. Most, your benefits are pretty in line. I mean, like your insurance, your health insurance, your dental, all of those are pretty much in line with us. The big one's going to be the WRS and the 401K. Because of the county, because I can say this because I was a county employee. So WRS, I mean, you guys have to put the 6% and they put the 6%. I mean, that's a hefty lift for any, for any county. I mean, that is, I mean, that's, that's hefty. Most 401K plans, you know, you put whatever an employee puts in, the county or employer matches up to a percentage of whatever. So, so it's, you can look at it two ways. So an employee can put in what they want to put in and they're not automatically having to put in that 6.9 or 6, whatever that is. So they have that balance piece where an employer puts in up to a certain percentage. So that's a difference too, from a perspective. So there is, there is some savings there potentially. So those plans are a little different. So, and then also your, how you manage your, we have, we, our PLV is a very different way too. The way we do our, our employee benefits are different. So how we manage that is different as well. So actually, we're very generous, but it's different.
I just have a general question. The term you're using, survey, is that a complaint? Is that?
Yeah. So nursing homes have what they call, to be federally, to receive federal dollars for Medicare and Medicaid, you have to be surveyed by the state or federal surveyors. And so the federal surveys give that to the state. So there's the Division of Quality Assurance come in annually, they have to come in between nine and 15 months to survey your building, to do a federal certification. Or they can come in on a complaint more often, depending on what happens. So I think you guys still haven't seen them yet, right? So they're due for their, in their nine to 15 month window and technically they need to be at Vernon Manor by November 30th to hit their 15 months. So any day they should be here. Yeah. When I talk about a survey, yes. And then they come in, they look at you and then they may give you a citation and then you have to correct that within a certain amount of time. Or you could have a deficiency free, which is always an awesome thing to have happen.
Which I understand we were reacting to previously.
Yes. And then when I talked about an immediate jeopardy, when I said an immediate jeopardy, that means that's a, not a good thing to have happen.
I suggest we take a little bit of a break here because I think it's, you want to hear the other side of the story. Dusty?
We've got a break scheduled for after BSJ does it.
Right after that's done.
Yeah, for Cassie. When you say they owe 3.4 million back to the general fund, is that essentially gone? And at this point it's, let's not add to it or is there any opportunity? Okay, we're seeing head nuts. Okay. I feel like that yes was all I needed. Thank you.
I just had a question. You had stated, or I, on the slide it said you have the capacity to reinvest in the building and I know that the building is maybe not up to how people wish a nursing home would be. This, so tell me more what that means. How do you have the capacity to reinvest? How is that meaningful?
So for you guys, it would be working with you. So let's say after a couple of years, we actually show a profit for you because whatever profit you get goes back to you. It's not me. So how the agreement's written is there's the management fee and then there is a profit share, right? That's how it's written. So we get a little bit of it, you get the rest of it. So that money goes back to the county. So if there's a profit and then we say, okay, you want to create, and I'm going to make up a crazy thing, okay? Let's say you want to make a circus room and it's going to cost XYZ dollars. We come with that proposal, we would go to your advisor group and to Cassie or whoever and you guys would, we would do the work, we would vet it out, we would tell you how much that capital project would be. We would then work with you to say, so we would create that opportunity through the investments to say, here's what it would cost you. Do you guys want to do that? So that's how we do that. And that would be like also through our like strategic planning and working with our board and working with our, our other folks, like what we're doing currently through our strategic plan saying, we're doing like a market study right now. So like part of that market study is like looking at our markets and saying, what is really out there? Do we have the market to say, we need to add more beds, we need to do this, we need to do that? So that's kind of where we get those information too.
Do you have a follow?
Well, I have another question. I got a lot of questions. The 3.4 million, I hear it's gone from the general fund, but is there, are there accounts receivable out there that still need to be recouped in that timeframe? Because that would...
That was, that'll be as part of the audit report on our audited financials for 123123. So that would have taken into account any accounts receivables or anything like that.
Okay. So that is factored into it. Whether we've actually received it or not, that is on the books as an account receivable number.
Yeah, that's...
Yes.
Yes. That's cash that the general fund has floated, Vernon Manor to date.
Thank you.
A break has been requested, so let's take a little break.
Good job there, Warren.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we're ready to resume.
Yeah. Whistle works better than a gavel, I guess. Okay, we have some clerical errors. Jerry's going to explain them.
Because they're mine. Item F, as you see, item D and E are both numbered 2024-50. So item F is actually a 51. It's numbered 51 in your packet. It's just labeled 50 on your agenda. And F and G are actually combined as one resolution, number 52 in your packet. And that's just, they should have been combined on the agenda, but they're not. So just a couple clerical errors there.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we're, Resolution 2024-47?
We get it.
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Anybody in the room or online wish to make a comment?
Stand up online. Stacy.
Okay, Stacy?
Good morning. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yep.
My voice isn't carrying as loud as it usually does right now, so I'll apologize. I just wanted to notify the board. I received this morning via email a notice that Vernon County will be receiving an award from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. We're receiving the Recycling Excellence Award for our overall program. This is the second time Vernon County has received this award in the last five years. So I just wanted to share some good news.
Thank you, yay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lonnie?
Is it my turn here to?
Yep.
Okay. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for Vernon Manor, who is a county home nursing home. There's state statutes. The previous speaker is, they are not controlled by state statutes, same state statutes that we are as a county nursing home. State statute states that the Board of Trustees is in control of the nursing home, and they are to hire the administrator and in charge of all affairs of the nursing home. If the nursing home does not make enough money, Board of Supervisors makes up the difference. And should it have been, a resolution passed many, many years ago to that effect, that they pay the difference? So now, we've come to the point where nobody ever comes and talks to the Board of Trustees. Things are done that we are totally unaware of. One thing that's in the state statutes, it says that the county coordinator has no say in anything done with the Board of Trustees, nor with most committees. I'm damn nervous up here talking about this. I'm trying to present facts that's out of the state statutes. Now, I know some of you are going to disagree with me, but you have to read the statutes to understand it. And I don't know what more I can say on that part. Now, as far as losing money, I hear it all the time, we're losing a million dollars a year, losing a million dollars a year. I have been on the Board of Trustees for eight years. Eight years I've been on the Board of Trustees, supposedly we've lost a million dollars every year. What's that add up to? Eight million dollars. Okay. When I first came on the board, I was told in the sheets that we was a little less than a million dollars in the hole. This is what John Howell was in charge of the financial at that point in time, and he tried to explain all this sheet out to me. And one thing he didn't explain to me was the fact that we had money coming in all the time, that a bunch of people, Medicare, Medicaid, all these different agencies that owed us money. So we really wasn't a million dollars in debt at that time. We must have been right around 500,000. Damn, I turned that off. And consequently, if we was about $500,000 actual in debt at that point in time, now we should be 8,500,000 if we've been losing a million dollars every year. We're not. We're not even close to that. And I don't, I don't agree with the figures that were presented earlier, because I mentioned there were all these other things, depreciation and so on. So these are just actual facts concerning county nursing homes. Now, Kim back here, she was once part of the Sauk County Nursing Home, that they built a new nursing home. They had to close it down now, and they sold it for 10 cents on the dollar. I may not going to go much further on that, but it was a county nursing home. That's, now, our nursing home has, sometimes we are criticized. Presently, we have a two rating for Medicare. We have a two rating. We used to be a five, the very top. We used to be right up there. Now we're down to two, thanks mainly to COVID. Northland Nursing Home is a two. Just want you to know that also. Now, I'm not going to say anything else. If you don't believe me, go to the state statutes, come and talk to me. I'd like to have somebody come and talk to trustees sometimes. If you don't enjoy it, call me on the phone, whatever. I get a lot of calls. I talk to a lot of people about this. Thank you for listening. Now I can quit being so nervous.
Just as corporation counsel, I'd just like to respond to the opinions related to the statute. I heard Mr. Muller say that the authority to manage and govern the operations of Vernon Manor lies with the Board of Trustees, and that is not correct. And I appreciate and understand why that misunderstanding is there, and that's the, I guess, dangers, I'll say, of reading a statute in a vacuum, if you will. But the statute is 4618, and in that statute, it does appear to say the Board of Trustees, and it does say that the Board of Trustees manages the, in this case, Vernon Manor. But you read on, and then you read in the Attorney's General's opinions that is referenced in that statute, and you see that they do so at the direction of the county board. The county board has the ultimate authority over the management of the nursing homes and over who makes those decisions, including whether it's an administrative coordinator. If you're interested in details, come to me later, and I can get you the sites on the opinions that I'm referencing. But the law is that it's up to you guys here on the board floor if you resolve to go the route of a BSJ management agreement or not.
Thank you for that clarification. We have Kristin online?
Yeah, I was just, I had some questions as an employee at Vernon Manor, because our maintenance that is currently here, I know that they are not currently Vernon Manor's. So BSJ, if we do go
Okay, we're ready to resume. Whistle works better than the gavel, I guess. Okay, we have some clerical errors. Jerry's going to explain them.
Because they're mine. Item F, as you see, item D and E are both numbered 2024-50. So item F is actually a 51. It's numbered 51 in your packet. It's just labeled 50 on your agenda. And F and G are actually combined as one resolution, number 52 in your packet, and that's it should have been combined on the agenda, but they're not. So just a couple clerical errors there.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we're, Resolution 2024-47?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Anybody in the room or online wish to make a comment?
Stand up online. Stacy.
Okay, Stacy?
Good morning. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yep.
My voice isn't carrying as loud as it usually does right now, so I'll apologize. I just wanted to notify the board. I received this morning via email a notice that Vernon County will be receiving an award from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. We're receiving the Recycling Excellence Award for our overall program. This is the second time Vernon County has received this award in the last five years, so I just wanted to share some good news.
Yay. Thank you, yay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lonnie?
Is it my turn here to?
Yep.
Okay. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for Vernon Manor, who is a county home nursing home. Those state statutes, the previous speaker is, they are not controlled by state statutes, same state statutes that we are as a county nursing home. State statute states that the Board of Trustees is in control of the nursing home, and they are to hire the administrator and in charge of all affairs of the nursing home. If the nursing home does not make enough money, Board of Supervisors makes up the difference. And should it have been, a resolution passed many, many years ago to that effect, that they pay the difference. So now, we've come to the point where nobody ever comes and talks to the Board of Trustees. Things are done that we are totally unaware of. One thing that's in the state statutes is says that the county coordinator has no say in anything done with the Board of Trustees, nor with most committees. I'm damn nervous up here talking about this. I'm trying to present facts that's out of the state statutes. Now, I know some of you are going to disagree with me, but you have to read the statutes to understand it. And I don't know what more I can say on that part. Now, as far as losing money, I hear it all the time. We're losing a million dollars a year, losing a million dollars a year. I have been on the Board of Trustees for eight years. Eight years I've been on the Board of Trustees. Supposedly, we've lost a million dollars every year. What's that add up to? Eight million dollars. Okay. When I first came on the board, I was told in the sheets that we was a little less than a million dollars in the hole. This is what John Howell was in charge of the financial at that point in time, and he tried to explain all this sheet out to me. And one thing he didn't explain to me was the fact that we had money coming in all the time, that a bunch of people, Medicare, Medicaid, all these different agencies that owe us money. So we really wasn't a million dollars in debt at that time. We must have been right around 500,000. Damn, I turned that off. And consequently, if we was about 500,000 dollars actual in debt at that point in time, now we should be 8,500,000 if we've been losing a million dollars every year. We're not. We're not even close to that. And I don't, I don't agree with the figures that were presented earlier, because I mentioned that there were all these other things, depreciation and so on. So these are just actual facts concerning county nursing homes. Now, Kim back here, she was once part of the Sauk County Nursing Home, that they built a new nursing home. They had to close it down now. And they sold it for 10 cents on the dollar. I may not going to go much further on that, but it was a county nursing home. That's, now, our nursing home has, sometimes we are criticized. Presently, we have a two rating for Medicare. We have a two rating. We used to be a five, the very top. We used to be right up there. Now we're down to two, thanks mainly to COVID. Northland Nursing Home is a two. Just want you to know that also. Now, I'm not going to say anything else. If you don't believe me, go to the state statutes, come and talk to me. I'd like to have somebody come and talk to trustees. Sometimes if you don't enjoy it, call me on the phone, whatever. I get a lot of calls. I talk to a lot of people about this. Thank you for listening. Now I can quit being so nervous.
Just as Corporation Council, I'd just like to respond to the opinions related to the statute. I heard Mr. Muller say that the authority to manage and govern the operations of Vernon Manor lies with the Board of Trustees, and that is not correct, and I appreciate and understand why that misunderstanding is there, and that's the, I guess, dangers, I'll say, of reading a statute in a vacuum, if you will. But the statute is 4618, and in that statute, it does appear to say the Board of Trustees, and it does say that the Board of Trustees manages the, in this case, Vernon Manor. But you read on, and then you read in the Attorney General's opinions that is referenced in that statute, and you see that they do so at the direction of the county board. The county board has the ultimate authority over the management of the nursing homes and over who makes those decisions, including whether it's an administrative coordinator. If you're interested in details, come to me later, and I can get you the sites on the opinions that I'm referencing, but the law is that it's up to you guys here on the board floor if you resolve to go the route of a BSJ management agreement or not.
Thank you for that clarification. We have Kristen online?
Yeah, I was just, I had some questions as an employee at Vernon Manor, because our maintenance that is currently here, I know that they are not currently Vernon Manor's. So if BSJ, if we do go further with that, what would that look like?
Yes, this is public comment. We, and we, you have to ask somebody outside of public comment to get an answer.
And the resolution.
And the resolution will answer that.
Okay.
Bruce Kilmer.
Okay, Bruce?
This has been a polarizing topic ever since I came on the board and became Chair of the Trustees, and it was a pretty steep learning curve for Bruce on this one. And I appreciate everybody that took the time and the patience to work with me along this journey. But we've all heard a lot of talk about money and budgets, and all that stuff's important. But at the end of the day, one thing I always thought was the most important as far as being part of the board and trustees is the people. It's the people that live there and call that place home every day, and the people that work there. So sometimes we have to set the money aside and think about the people that live there and the people that work there. They're our friends and neighbors. And while the money and the budget's important, I don't believe that it, in good conscience, to just hope things are going to get better without taking positive action. And that's why we entered into negotiations with BSJ. That process was already in place when I came on board, and I enjoyed working with Cassie and enjoyed working with Nikki, and I understood what my role was in that. And that wasn't my sandbox to play in. That was their, that was their role in this process. Cassie and Nikki, they were the ones that need to have the direct contact with BSJ. That's their job. That's what they do, and I never believed that it was a part of the trustees or my job to have that direct connection, and I can honestly say that I never once reached out directly to BSJ through this whole process. That's, that was all Cassie and Nikki's job. Retention, Supervisor Waller brought that up. It's critical that we want the brightest and best people working out there, and I think BSJ has got the track record and the process is in place to attract the brightest and best people. You know, the incentives they have for their nursing staff is, I haven't heard about that from anybody else that offers that type of a package. It's amazing. So stability is what's been lacking in our success, I believe, in my opinion, at these facilities. We've got some great people there. We really do. But if we can stabilize things from management on down, it's my belief that we're going to get this ship back on an even keel. Thank you.
I'm going to lighten up the moment a little bit, because I prepared something to talk about during the, during this period. First of all, I brought this up before, that I thought, all the departments we have in Vernon County, we don't share enough what's going on. Like, here's an example of land and water last week that I was, I found really interesting. Phil Peterson, wildlife biologist, he was present and gave his, I think, annual report. But he is talking about bears, cougars, deer and wolves, and collaring. They collared wolves out of the Port McCoy Wolf Pack. And there's a wolf pack established in Illinois. They like swamps where people don't go. And the Port McCoy Wolf Pack with a radio collar tracked a young female wolf to Illinois twice to visit that pack. And I had a hard time getting through Westby this morning. Just imagine, that's an animal. Those kind of things that happen in committees that we don't get to hear about because they get lost in conversations. The other one, and I really, I enjoy serving on the Board of Health, and we have our county coroner, Betty Nye, and she's a completely serious and a very ethical person. But she gave her annual report, and in Vernon County, October 1 to October 1, we lost 305 people. And I find it interesting, because we're all going to have to face this at some point, but there were 200 cremations and 104 burials, one undetermined causes of death, accidents 31. Things, you'd think 305 people in a county with only 30,000 people seems high, but every month it's 26 to 30. And the other comment, because I have to keep the weather at the forefront for the next year and a half, is, this is interesting. In two places on the same night, northeast United States was hit with a 1-in-1,000-year non-hurricane event. Storms dropped 10 inches in 12 hours on Oxford, Connecticut, and 35 miles away in Stony Brook, New York, 7 inches in 3 hours. This is per Nick Basil, Director of State Weather Risk Center at University of Albany, New York. He said, "Any one of these events would be noteworthy," as William Syret, Professor of Meteorology and Atmospheric Science at Penn State University, agreed, "that these would be characterized as 1-in-1,000-year events." So I've been keeping track of the rain events since 2007 particularly. If you remember, that was when the bluffs around Genoa and Stoddard washed down into the road. That was measured at 22 inches in 24 hours. So I followed the storm near Caithston, that's that same year, and that was 22 inches in 24 hours. The point I'm trying to make in this is that these two professors agree that the rain events were 1-in-1,000-year events. Then Vernon County has, since 2007, experienced six 1,000-year events. I think maybe they're done.
Thank you, Dave. We have Ben online. Can you hear us, Ben?
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Ben Wooyeon. Until two days ago, I was the County Conservationist for Vernon County with Vernon County Land and Water. I have spent nearly a majority of my life serving Vernon County to the best of my ability. I think if we look at what that department was like in 2009, it is absolutely incredible what has been created. I get some of that credit, though much of that credit goes to the amazing staff with Vernon County Land and Water and a very supportive land conservation committee over these years. I'm very proud of the legacy and the work that I have done here. Two days ago, I was given only a couple of minutes to decide if I wanted to be terminated or to resign. I was given a list of allegations to look at very briefly. I strongly refute those allegations that were presented against me. I believe they are either an exaggeration, an overstatement, a misunderstanding, but not accurate, and I have only intended to serve Vernon County to the best of my ability. I would ask that the county board consider looking into who made allegations about me, how they could have potentially benefited. Did they have an axe to grind? Could they benefit? Was there a reason? I have been in the middle of controversy for many years. There's dams and there's many other issues, and unfortunately, it's impossible for everyone to like me. It took me a while to learn that, but that's true. So some people have been unhappy, and I think that's really what got caught up. I would ask that you please look at the process or lack of process. Did these accusers ever bring anything to me? Because after 15 years, you're going to be able to make a laundry list of some things that were possibly mistakes, but certainly not ill-intent, and certainly only ways to try to best serve Vernon County and the department. I really appreciate this time, and I ask that, no matter what, please do not let my history, my legacy, and what has happened in Vernon County be sullied, because I'm very proud, and it has absolutely been an honor to serve the county board, the Land and Water Committee, and the people of Vernon County. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ben. Mary? Mary Henry online?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not there in person today because I'm at the State Land and Water Conference in Stevens Point. I serve on the board. So I'm breaking between two places, but I find this Vernon County, our Manor and Vernon Acres, I've attended many, many of the meetings before this new agreement has been looked at, and I feel it's been done in a very ethical way to benefit our residents, our elderly residents, that we are all hopefully going to be at some point and may need that place, a Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. And I find this to be the best way possible to still provide our county residents that deserve the care, the best option financially, but also physically, helping retain and have longevity and continue to be a county service to our residents. And I find that agreement such a positive opportunity on so many levels to serve our elderly and make this a positive effort to continue to have this option available. If we continue down the route that we have and not enter into this agreement, then we may be looking at selling it, and then somebody from another state trying to pick it up and make it run where BSJ has longevity of success. I talked with Danny, the mayor, in Westby. They've been in this agreement 40 years. This isn't just a new thing for them. Forty years of success, and only one year did BSJ lose money, but that did not affect the agreement with Westby. So I think that speaks volumes in itself of our neighboring and also competitor and having wages, and I look at those signs. I look at their Facebook page. I follow. I follow ours and Vernon Manor. It just got up and going within this last year. But I also look at the longevity and the steadiness that they have that we haven't been able to provide. And they have the policies, the procedures, some of the debt, and the reason that we are in the circumstances are we is collecting bad debt. We're going to be writing off next month over $200,000, a bad debt that could not be collected. We also have to look at the future of the health of that building. We have a parking lot situation. We have water, and we have issues with the foundation of the building. Those rooms do need to be updated. It's a 1984 building. We can't do both. But if we can get the ship turned around and get into the positive, then we can look at, yes, we have to address our structure of that building, and it would make it possible to get that building up to where it needs to be to have for the future. So I am myself very much in favor of the direction of going into an agreement with BSJ. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dave?
Dave Egan, District 8. You wanted us to state our name, right? We all know. I forgot one thing. If you check your mail, your county mail, we got a very nice letter from Trout Unlimited, who they want to go on record as saying that the dams are protecting the fisheries in Vernon County in the dripless area. They said that trout fishing, and the mayor of Westby touched on this when he was here, trout fishing in Vernon County, according to Trout Unlimited, brings in $1.6 billion in direct and indirect benefits. 1.6 billion. But read that, read that mail.
Anybody else online or in person wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, Resolution 2024-47, Quick Claim Deed to Adrian and Bethany Dunham.
Yeah, I don't hear where is it?
Okay. Partial number 112-00117-000, motion to bring it to the floor. Wade? And David? Screwed off? Go for it.
So as you recall, we had a couple of these last month. So these are tax-seated properties. These come before the General Government Committee to look at any offers we would get for the properties, and then they decide which bid they want to take, and then it comes to the county board. So you actually have three of these today. These were ones that we did not get an initial bid for, so we put them back out, set a minimum bid of a dollar, and then considered these bids at the last General Government Committee meeting. So the one, the first one that you have before you, that parcel, the bid that we got there was $12,400, and that was the highest bid for that parcel.
Any questions?
Motion to bring it to the
Good. Who was that? It was Wade and Dave.
We're discussing 2024-47. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm reading a bid of $10,054.
That's what I
I was looking at the wrong sheet. I was looking at the minutes from last month, actually. So yes, we are on 47, and that bid is $10,054. Thank you, Wade.
But all the other stuff she just said stands. Seeing no comment, all those in favor of Quick Claim Deed to Adrian and Bethany Dunham, partial number 112-00117-000, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Okay, Resolution 2024-48, Quick Claim Deed to Dan Weber, partial number 012-01049-000. Motion to bring it to the floor. Alice Ann, Martha? Same, sorry. Any questions? All in favor of Quick Claim Deed to Dan Weber, partial number 012-01049-000, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Resolution 2024-49, Quick Claim Deed to Tracy McCluskey, partial number 022-0814-0003. Motion to bring it to the floor. Alice Ann, Wade? Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Resolution, zero, Resolution 2024-50. Yeah, 50. Wisconsin Pre-Disaster Flood Resilience Grant.
So this is, you know, Amy Oliver would normally be presenting on this from Community Development, a grant that she would write. She is actually presenting Land Information Conference, the successes of a brick grant that we had, multi-departmental collaboration on that too, with Land Information, Land Conservation Zoning, and Emergency Management. So Brandon from Emergency Management, Monique. So Brandon from emergency management, Monique, Amy, and Samer Karbush from land and water are all presenting at the land information conference on that right now. So this grant kind of, same deal, kind of piggybacks on supervisor Egan's monthly weather report is designed to kind of mitigate some of those potential pitfalls. H&amp;H studies below the dams that will be or proposed to be decommissioned. So we're going to look at structures below those, properly size them for the expected increase in flows that they'll be looking at. Culvert inventories, anything under six, anything over six was already inventoried with townships. County's got a good handle on theirs. But we'll be looking at inventorying all those. So we have a comprehensive inventory of all the culverts in the county spatially, size, and get as much data as we can on that. This is a grant, like I said, multi-department. The match is whole chunk. And our grant application deadline is November 30th. We've had good feedback on what we've submitted so far, just our letter of intent. The grant will be awarded sometime January to February of next year. And we'll have two years to spend those funds. Any questions for me?
Okay.
Just to clarify, you said this survey will be the entire county?
Entire county for the culverts, yes. Yeah, not just those watersheds, but we're targeting the H&amp;H studies, replacement on those structures in those affected watersheds.
Thank you.
And there's about 33 structures that we targeted on that. I recently sent it out to a couple engineering firms just to get rough bids on that. So we know what we're kind of looking at. So yeah.
So this is a reimbursement grant. So whatever expenses we have to pay upfront, can you describe where those are budgeted for, for the upcoming fiscal year? And?
I believe that's going to be out of community development, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a 25% local match that was approved for whole chunk funding at the finance committee meeting.
But then the, whatever we get from the grant won't be until after we've expended funds.
So it just comes out of, I'm sorry, their operational expense. And then we'll, we either move the whole chunk ahead of time or we move it after the operational expenses.
Thank you.
Going to be like something use the interns for?
This is a project that you use interns for, like you did on the county level?
Yeah, but the culvert inventory, that's going to be mainly interns. Obviously, H&amp;H is going to be beyond them. So we're going to have to enlist an engineer for that one, a professional engineer.
Does the wages of the interns get covered?
Yes, yeah. That's part of it, yeah.
Thank you. Bruce?
Just to clarify, so this isn't just a study. It's an actual building of inventory of tubes also.
Inventory of tubes, and yes, the study is to look at those affected bridges and culverts below those dams that will be removed. So then we can properly size that to mitigate the damage. Yeah.
Dave Egan? Dave Egan. Is this 22 townships, three cities and half a dozen villages? There's thousands and thousands of culverts. It's a really ambitious project.
Yeah, so to kind of explain that, anything six to 12s already been inventoried by the townships, that was this past year. So anything under six, and that's why we kind of outlined anything under six in those townships. Anything that's got water in it, we've already inventoried as water flowing through it. That's been part of a study that, part of our brick grant that they're presenting on right now at the land information conference, that was covered under there. So we're greatly diminished on what we have to do yet. It's just going to be dry tubes under six foot. Yeah.
Charlie?
These are all on town or municipal roads? This doesn't include like private driveways or something?
No, no, town and municipals, no.
Any other questions? Nate?
Clarification on that. Like my drive, the culvert is essentially in the ditch. Is that included in that count? Or is it like, when you say not including drives, is that like, well, you've got to go down through a ravine to get to our house or something?
Anything, generally anything that's crossing the roadway. So that they'd have to dig up basically, you know, perpendicular to the road.
Any further questions? So this is just to apply for a grant. Okay, all those in favor of resolution 20, yeah, resolution 2024-50 for the Wisconsin pre-disaster flood resilience grant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Motion passes. Make sure I get this right.
It's 51.
This is 51. Resolution 2024-51. Memorandum of understanding between Vernon County and Valley Stewardship Network for Prairie planting and county-owned lands. Motion to bring it to the floor. Wade and Nate? Okay.
So this was actually part of the plan when we looked at the county farm lease last year. And then we were able to have this partnership with Valley Stewardship Network come up. We as a county can't apply for this funding, but they can. So the idea is that we partner together, they apply for the funding. And then that funding is split 30% to the county. The county would be responsible for the site preparation, the weed removal, the seed planting, and then the follow-up mowing and maintenance and weed control. It's about 27 and a half acres on the county farm that would be planted with the prairie. You've got the map up there, a little bit updated from what you had in your packet originally. And then Valley Stewardship Network would be responsible for obviously the application, all the paperwork that's involved, the farm operating plan, submitting that to NRCS, the purchase of the seed, the pre and post monitoring, and then providing technical support and management where needed. And then the idea eventually, once it gets established with that, it would be really an educational opportunity as well. So there may be potential in the future for us to have some signage out there so people can, you know, understand the importance of prairie planting. Yeah.
Any questions? Nate, Nathaniel?
That was not me. That was not me. So my assumption is we're going to probably put some like walking paths into this. Like how accessible is this to like the community as it gets established?
I don't know if I'm the right person to answer this question, but I think that was the ultimate intent because it is, you know, it's on county farm. It's publicly accessible. And I'm looking at Matt and he's shaking his head.
Yeah, and I was, you know, kind of have a brainstorm kind of little, little concept about it. There's already trails there. The city has a trail basically from a paved trail from kind of in back of the Quonset hut and the sheriff's impound and all that to Sleepy Hollow. I mean, if we could expand on that, we can connect a lot of stuff and it could be a real opportunity for the community to use that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments?
So my question is, was this once working ag land?
It's, um... Yeah, it was, it was once, but it's kind of the marginal land where the big equipment can't get into some of the corners and that type of thing.
It's 27 acres, Lauren. The number of fields in Vernon County that are over 27 acres are fairly limited. I'm just not sure this is the best use for this ground.
If you could bring the map up again, please.
If you look at one and five, the one was basically just a weed patch. Five never has been farmed. The spot on three, that actually is farmed beyond where it should be. They farm out on the right of way, which you're not supposed to. Three encompasses most of, which would be highway or town road right of way. Number four there, the slopes on the east side of that are pretty steep. We have erosion issues that come down below the pond from the highway shop. And that other, be the west side of the waterway below the pond. And then there, the map doesn't do it justice. There's two old fence rows in number four that technically that whole spot there needs work done for it to be farmed efficiently. The past renter, the five years that he rented it, stated concerns to me that a lot of that stayed wet down there. Production was subpar. And then to create, we sold the property between two and four to a private individual. And he was appreciative of the slopes there to protect on his farm where he built the fence. Part of this plan would be to not only do the prairie restoration, but to create a buffer with him from the ag practices next to his property. The number two spot is the, is the, there's a waterway there where the one spot was actually a weed patch again this year, the spot to the south. And that little triangle piece where the two actually is, that was farmed, but it's in between them two waterways. And part of the plan was to restore them two waterways because both of them have ditches, substantial ditches in them that's hard to control, that we want to redo them waterways as well.
Thank you, Phil. So it is kind of marginal land. It's not all, yeah. Yeah. Any other question? Any other questions? Charlie?
My question is, the 30% that we get, does that offset what we'll have for the conditions that we're responsible for, the site prep and all that? Are we going to have more money into it than just that?
My understanding is that would cover our expenses.
Just to piggyback on that, the seeds always, prairie seeds really expensive. You're looking at 1,500, you know, you can see as much as 1,500 an acre with, you know, mixes that have 60 some species in. I don't think they're going that intensive, but we'll have to see.
Mary, are you online?
Yes, I am. I'm looking at being on the board for Valley Stewardship. So I was there at the meeting when this agreement was discussed. And it's a great opportunity for us to do a partnership with Valley Stewardship and practice good conservation, land conservation practices in a way for our county to showcase, this is what you can do on these buffers or waterways to improve and hold that land, which is important going forward with the decommissioning of the dams that we want to showcase, but do it ourselves. Of best practices in these prairie strips are going to help the pollinators for one, and then two, help with the erosion and build up that soil again that has been depleted or in a low-lying area. So I'm very much in favor of this partnership that will benefit our land on the county farm.
Thank you, Mary. Dave? Dave?
I was going to say something along the same lines as Mary Henry said. The, we, for over a year, I think, we talked about dramatically changing the way we rent out the county farm land by putting in strips like the Coon Valley Conservation Corps did back in the 1930s. Like Mary said, was kind of showcasing that county farm. And I too agree that this prairie planting will, will add to the, to the community that can see what can be done with the rough land.
Nate?
So as Matt said, prairie seed is expensive. I'd like to, pun intended, plant the seed potentially in three, four years when this is established, we could maybe contract it out to a seed company for harvest and maybe recoup a little bit. So just a thought.
Good thought. I would say that I know where Kevin's coming from. As a farmer, we can't eat prairie. So... Mary?
Yes, and Nate, that is a good, of re-collecting those seeds that has been brought up. I'm just going to prenote on this. Until it gets established for the next couple of years, it's not going to be pretty. So when you drive by there, it isn't going to be anything to look at. It's going to take about four to five years to get it to look established and beautiful. And there is the plan to have that as, you know, it's county land so people can go on it, to use it as an education area too. We talked about that of making sure to put signage out so that people are aware of what is happening and it isn't just a piece of land or strips that aren't being used. They are, but it's going to take a while to establish and not to think, oh, this is what the county's doing. It looks awful. It's going to take a while. It's a process.
Nate?
Totally understand what Mary's saying, but I feel like that keeps coming up like we're preparing people for the worst on it. There's plenty of stuff in the prairie that'll come up the first year. We'll see a lot of black-eyed Susans. The second year, we'll start seeing purple cone flowers. Like we're going, we're going to see results quicker than four or five years is all I want to say.
Any further comment? Okay, everybody, everybody in, blah, blah. All in favor of resolution 2024-51, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Resolution passes. Oh, that's in there twice. Put the, it's in there twice. Go to 52.
Groundhog day.
Keep going. That's your agreement. That's the map. It's the map.
Last page.
It's not pending in the official package.
Okay. Okay, resolution 2024-52. Imagine an agreement with Bethany St. Joseph for the operation of Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. Motion to bring it to the floor. Dave Egan? Wade Lawler?
I have a question. For Cassie, what, what do we budget for labor over at nursing home annually?
Dave, I thought I had that in a spreadsheet, but it's, it's lumped with a few other things. So I don't want to give you a solid number right now because I don't have a solid number for you. But it's significant. I mean, and payroll is the majority of their budget there.
Significant like millions? I saw, I saw?
Yeah, yeah. A million. Yeah, Greg had it classified in the audit as 5 million. And I was trying to cross-reference that when we had a little break and I ran out of time. So, but it was listed on our, our audit report as 5 million. Yeah.
Should we go into closed session or we need to just continue until we feel that we need to go in closed session or?
Unless you have some items that you feel you want to negotiate, you know, which would be the, or, you know, specific personnel items. But I, I think it's proper to continue in open session. And then Nikki is on, is listening as well. So if for some reason it's bordering, I think, you know, she'll speak up. There you go.
We will continue in open session unless someone has some delicate numbers, I guess, or something, or something, or personnel that they want to discuss. I would, I would ask for you to request to go into closed session before you bring it up. Okay. Wade?
These are potentially just clerical questions. And if they are, my follow-up question is, do we need to, you know, can we amend in, in the moment here? So on page one of these two management agreements, the first line, one describes an agreement, Vernon Manor describes an agreement being So on page one of these two management agreements, the first line, one describes an agreement, uh, the Vernon Manor describes an agreement being entered into in August of 2024. Vernon Acres shows October of 2024.
Clerical error.
Clerical error. Okay, moving on. Um. On page six. The last line of paragraph 52 sub A, uh, has a typo, um, where it's the word 90 is typed out and then parentheses, the numeral 60. In terms of the term that we have, uh, available to us to, uh, exit the agreement.
Also clerical error. And that got brought up in Vernon Manor and I must have missed that because it is correct in the Vernon Acres agreement. Yep.
Yep.
Cause they really, with the exception of the fees and the addresses and the naming of the facilities, these two agreements should be pretty much identical. Um, so if we notice anything else like that, just let me know.
Okay. And then, so the last one I have is the fee. And so maybe the question has been answered, but Vernon Manor is 15,000 per month plus the 25%. And Vernon Acres is 10,000 per month plus the 25%. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it was Allison.
Uh, I had a question, uh, about this transition from employees from being county employees to BSJ employees. And how is compensation the same? I understand there's a difference with that 401K. But I, I want to understand that, how that impacts the current employees.
Yep. So that is one of the biggest items that we've been looking at. Uh, so the, uh, BSJ has been provided with wages for all of the staff there. Um, and we've been told no one's wages will be reduced. In fact, you know, Kim had said today, some of them will go up a little bit. Um, and some will just remain the same until their wages basically catch up. Um, we're also looking at, we've also been looking at the benefit packages. Um, there's no way with WRS, there's no way for me to know if someone's vested necessarily, you know, they may have previous service. We don't know about. Um, but there would be opportunity for them to roll what's in their WRS into, um, BSJ's retirement plan. Uh, Tricia and I did meet with the WRS representative to get a lot of those answers ahead of time. Um, and then if this is approved, we will be bringing a rep from WRS into the building to meet with staff.
So what about PTO? What about?
So we've been looking at all of those. Um, so making sure that those balances are taken into account. Um, BSJ also has, and Kim just touched on it just a little bit, um, this PL, it's PLV, right, Kim?
Um, ours is a little bit differently. A little closer. Um. It's all one bank. We do not cap it out. So like it stays forever. So we don't like, it doesn't go away. So you can use it, you can take, you can use it anytime you want. We also are going to, we're looking at their lifetime hours and figuring out, because we like. The number of hours you work is how you increase your PLV rankings or your ratings, how much you earn each pay period. So we are actually going through and we have gotten that information from Tricia. And basically we're like putting them into the number of what their PLV will be rated. So like, if you're a 20-year employee, but you only work part-time, you may have a different PLV. Ranking versus somebody who's a full-time 20-year employee. And I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but so we're actually trying to keep them whole. So they're not losing their seniorities, their, where they're at in, where they're currently at.
And health insurance contributions?
Very similar. Our health insurance plans were very similar. Um, and just to speak to the PLV, our PTO does not, uh,
Carryover.
So it's, it's use it or lose it, or it goes in their ELB. And then, um, the ELB is, um, only accessible if they have an FMLA qualifying event. Um, we did create that sick leave, you know, up to 40 hours last year, but essentially if they don't use their PTO, they can only access it for FMLA. And it's not a termination benefit either. So that actually is a, a, a better benefit than what we offer.
So what I'm hearing is they're maintaining whole. There is a little bit of, the WSAR is the difference, but it still can roll over and continue.
Yep. Longevity is taken into, um, account. Yeah, there's, we, we've been very mindful of the, the staff. And, and what their benefits would be in the, in the transition.
Anybody else? Lonnie?
Lonnie Muller here. Um, this agreement here has the nursing home. And, uh, senior living facilities together. We are separate entities. The senior living facility is on the profitable stage now. Just as we projected it would be when we had it constructed years ago and got derailed a lot, quite a ways, uh, because of COVID. Uh, or otherwise we'd have been a lot further ahead already. Uh, but to think that this, uh, agreement here would give Vernon Acres, they have to, they get $10,000 a month. Plus 25%. Well, they know, they should well know that Vernon Acres is going to be providing a pretty darn good profit every month. That we're going to have to pay to them instead of using that money to pay off the loans that much quicker. Now, I know most of the residents in Vernon Acres are totally opposed to this agreement. They would like to run the whole operation themselves personally. I don't think we can run them both together. They're.
Um, just a few things I wanted to point out, um, to in the, in the agreement, um, there, there is an out clause for the county. So if we get into this and, you know, we, we decide it's not in our best interest, we can get out of it. Um, I, I wanted to address the maintenance issue that got brought up earlier. Um, this is an item we've had discussed. Um, the, the way that we understand it is each BSJ facility does, uh, have their own maintenance people. Um, so our, provided this goes through, our maintenance staff there, um, the county would actually like to keep. And so we would provide them with an offer letter and so would BSJ. And so they'll have a decision to make as far as that's handled. Um, there is something, uh, that came up recently. Um, the Department of Revenue just came out with something called an innovation grant. Um, municipalities, um, counties included are eligible for that. Um, if you transfer a service to either another municipality or a nonprofit, and you can show a cost savings of at least 10%. You can get 25% of the cost of service back, um, as a grant from the DOR over the course of three years. Um, I did contact the Department of Revenue. They do believe that we would be eligible to apply for the grant. Um, which would be, uh, $75,000 a year for three years, um, if, if we get approved for the grant. Um, one of the terms of that was your, obviously we have our out clause still, but your agreement has to be at least six years long. Um, so that's why the agreement states six years. Um, there's one other thing I wanted to point out in that in this agreement, um, the advisory, the county's advisory group would meet quarterly. Um, and the board would have to decide, do you want that to be the current board of trustees? Or would you like to create a different advisory group? If you create a different advisory group, you would essentially dissolve the board of trustees. Uh, so that's just a, I just want to point that out, that that's a decision that, that needs to be made. Um, if we move forward with this, we would see some, uh, budget savings, um, in IT. Um, currently those costs for all of our subscriptions, so all of the IT equipment, every email address, everything like that, we pay a subscription fee for those. Um, so those would come out of our, our budget. Um, yeah.
Um, with the DOR 25%, uh, what would happen, say we get those funds and then don't complete the six-year contract? Would we owe it back? Out of curiosity?
They're just coming out with the administrative rules. Um, they're not out yet, so I can't answer that question.
Dave Egan?
Uh, I'm kind of fixated on the, the numbers of the $7 million nearly in the labor that we won't have to budget for. That's, is it?
So those will still be in the nursing home budget. So they'll still be a budget. Those, those expenses will still be there. Um, there, the intent would be that we create a joint account, um, with BSJ. The expenses and the revenues come out of that joint account. So those, those payroll expenses are still there. Um, but it's, you know, at the end of the year is when, okay, if there's any profit sharing, that's, that's when that happens. Does that, does that make sense? Yeah. But it, it doesn't take long when you look at, you know, the, the question came up earlier as far as like, how are we doing this? And, and losing money like crazy, but you know, BSJ can do it and possibly turn it around. That, um, retirement contribution is huge. So if you, if you say that $5 million payroll is accurate. Um, and those, not that they're all WRS qualified, but say that they were, that's 200, and I did that math earlier. That's about $250,000 in savings right there. So that, that, that will help.
John? So we don't have any liability for, for the employees then, do we?
We do not.
So that's a pretty big savings too. Just one back injury or whatever also.
Yeah, they would be covered under BSJ's workers' comp insurance.
Before the vote, I just wanted to say, I've sat through a lot of these meetings and the general consensus is there's good staff there. But with the shortages and all the things going on, it's hard for an administrator to focus on administration when they're putting out fires, doing all those things. The management part seems to be the weak point. I mean, it's hard to keep, have time to keep up with everything. So common sense is if you have a weakness in the management part, to contract with a management group that has the time and the expertise to do it. Makes more sense. Um, and we're still keeping the nursing home. We're still keeping it here. They still have the same access. You know, the concerns about where is grandma going to go? Still here. Um, but you have professional managers that have the time to keep up with the big manual, the changes, make sure the billing gets done. So.
I, I've been asked about this a lot and what I tell them is that, you know, with their management team, you know, we don't even know what questions to ask as far as our management team. And their management team knows the answer before the question's even asked. It's already taken care of. And so, you know, to, to have that step up in management is just, it's, it's going to be really good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the, which one is the number here? It's 22. Uh, resolution 2024-52, the management agreement between Bethany St. Joe for the operation of Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Um, you calling for a ballot vote?
Yeah.
Okay, Lonnie calls for ballot vote.
And 2024-52 is the resolution number?
Uh, 2024-52. Just 52. Phil, Phil and Matt, could you come up and collect ballots for me, please? Or we got sheriff, somebody, anybody?
Aye is yes.
I have this wooden letter. To, to vote aye is a yes.
Man. Vote here.
Well, we need them here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you're going to keep them. I can trust you. We took this order. Uh, Supervisor Henry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Yes. Thank you. So it's 17 in favor, one opposed and one absent. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Um, I could announce, I suppose for the record, just Mr. Muller is the one that's opposed. Makes us think, Lonnie. Makes us make sure that we're keeping on top of it. Hey, we're back to the regular order of business. Uh, administrative coordinator's report?
So Flood Mitigation Alliance, we received four applications for citizen members to sit on that, uh, subcommittee. Um, and we have three open seats. So, um, those board members that are on the flood alliance, um, and the department heads will meet on the 30th. And I'll be sending a meeting invite out for that, um, where we'll review those applications and then make a recommendation to the Land Conservation and Education Committee. Um, from there we'll get started scheduling those meetings. Um, the planning commission has been working diligently on the comprehensive plan. Uh, the goal is to have the public hearing in January. Uh, the county board would be provided with the document in advance of the public hearing. Um, there will also be a presentation on the comprehensive plan process at the Towns Association meeting scheduled for next Thursday, October, October 24th. Here, right? Towns Association. Um, the general government committee and department heads held interviews with the finance director finalists on September 30th. Um, neither, uh, finalist was selected. So the decision was made to pause the formal recruitment process until January, knowing that we're going into the holidays and that position is really hard to recruit for anyways. And really hard to recruit for, um, over the holidays. So, um, we'll start that back up in January. Um, in the interim, I will continue to act as the finance director. Um, you should have all received an email on this, but the Kayla Fortney case was settled, uh, with a deferred prosecution agreement. Um, the county branding project is moving forward. We've had two meetings with Elevate Media and UW Extension. Um, Elevate is working to capture the fall colors right now. So they're out there getting drone footage. Um, and UW Extension is finalizing the survey that will be going out. So the survey that's going to go out is a combined housing and branding survey. Um, if you're on economic development committee, you know, we've been talking about doing that housing survey and we did not want to over survey people. So working with UW Extension on both of those projects. So it really just made sense to do that as a combined survey. Um, so that'll go out in early November. The 2025 budget hearing is scheduled for November 12th. So that is a Tuesday, which Jerry will talk about. Um, we'll be working on the budget book this next week. Um, it.
next week. Um, it, it is finalized and ready for board, but there's a lot that goes into actually creating the document. Um, hoping to have a copy to you all by the end of next week. Uh, the 2025 budget includes a 1% increase for those employees, um, on the step system, um, in addition to their steps, and a 1.5% increase for those in range. Um, it also includes a 5% decrease for health insurance rates. Um, we're looking at, uh, including quite a few highway projects in the budget as well. Um, as far as revenue goes, we only saw about a 99% increase in net new construction for this year, and about a $25,000 increase in shared revenue, which isn't much, so to get a little creative. Um, and then the county's equalized value grew 11% over the last year, which is pretty significant. Um, lastly, I just want to say thank you, um, for approving the BSJ agreement. That's something we've been working really hard on, and we've been working on it for about 10 or 11 months. Um, so looking forward to all of that. Um, and speaking of that, we do have staff meetings scheduled, um, at Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres tomorrow with BSJ to be there for the employees to answer questions, so.
You said the equalized value increased 11%?
Yes.
Is that due to all these rebals that are going on?
That, that and construction.
What? Well, I mean, the, the equalized value is going up is what's causing those rebals you're talking about. Any other questions for Cassie? Uh, seeing none. Are there any petitions? Are there any ordinances? Are there any memorials or remonstrance? Reports from standing or special committees? Any other unfinished business? Next regular meeting date? Tuesday, November 12? Well, that's by statute, but we would, we would meet at 9:00 AM for the budget hearing. Meeting itself will be at 9:30. You're not required to be here at 9:00, but that would be the time for people to make comments about the budget.
Yeah, and I'm planning on doing a budget presentation, so it would be great if you guys were here at 9:00. We'll have lots of good treats again, I'm sure.
Should Paul Moore let's worry?
I think that's after daylight savings time.
Uh, any requests for items for the next agenda? Okay, Bruce?
Now that, um, the decision is made for, made to go forward with the BSJ agreement, um, we still have the disposition of how the trustees, if that continues to function the way it does now, or whether the board will see fit to change that dynamic, and who's on it, and how many. So I would like to see that on the agenda, to keep this moving, so we don't get bogged down and get to a point to where we don't have a group of people interacting with BSJ to keep things moving.
Okay. That probably needs to go to a committee before it comes here, Allison. John Gough?
Yeah, give it.
And I don't, I don't think the, Gary, I don't think the trustees can, can, they can't vote on their own future.
We're really talking about changing the rules in the committee structure, so let's just say that.
Right, and that usually goes through General Government Committee. Sorry.
This.
General Government Committee.
And, and this is a question for Nikki, as to whether or not there are state statutes that will still apply as far as, um, Vernon Manor, you know, it's an elected position and stuff, so. Uh, no, Nate's first.
Okay. I apologize if this doesn't, uh, fall under agenda items, but I would propose exploring an option for a four-minute timer on the screen to ensure we're respectful of all board members and audience members' times. Sometimes things go a little.
I do track it, but you're not seeing it, I suppose.
We're not seeing it. I think it would be nice, um, I mean, I, right now, we're in my niche world with NLP Public Comment. They've literally got a timer with a webcam on it, and it's just one of the options on the screen. Um, just worth a thought.
Find a four-minute egg timer, we'll just flip.
I like it. They could put it up on the screens, too. So like, if you're here and you're speaking, you can see it. Yeah.
Point well taken, and we'll fix that. Thank you. Kevin? Yeah, sure. You can apply. Any other requests?
Here's your opportunity.
Motion to adjourn? Take your pick. I gotta give it to Frank. Yeah, you did. On the inside, on the inside.